Mayor Menregas.
President.
Welcome.
Right.
Oh, oh.
Sorry about that.
Mayor Benio.
Mayor Benio, I'm sorry. Alright, so this one, Chad?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna start off with our, um, budget presentation for this coming year and I wanna thank the council for giving this opportunity to present and thank the public for attending and I especially wanna thank Rose and the finance staff. They've worked many long hours, um, late into the night and on weekends to get this to you. Um, also wanna thank the directors and all their managers and staff, um, they all came together and as you'll see, um, really worked hard to put together a, uh, great budget this year. Um, our emphasis this year is gonna be on the reserve. Um, and also another theme will be conserving and as an ongoing theme, um, revenue. Um, as you know, we've increased the general fund by two million dollars in the last couple of years. Um, but we need to reserve, conserve the re- the reserve, we not, we need to make sure that keeps going up. And, and as you know, um, previous projections for last year, um, we were facing, uh, about a one point four million dollar deficit and Rose and the directors really got together and brought that down last year to a, um, deficit of only eighty-eight thousand dollars, so we did pretty good that first year. And we all knew there was about two and a half years we need to get through, um, until the hotel tax comes back, which, um, will come back in January of two thousand seventeen and then the, um, uh, pension obligation bonds go away July of two thousand eighteen, so we need to get through to those two years, so that's why we need to kind of reserve and conserve and increase revenues. Um, and also, as you know, we were looking at possibly, uh, projected deficit of one point nine million dollars for this year, so we've been working really hard on that, um, everybody's coming together, tightening their belt. Um, we use special funds as much as we can to offset general funds and so as you'll see later, um, we've got some really good results. Um, I do wanna mention that we're covering mostly general funds tonight. Um, that's the important fund for the city, the special fund, the gas tax, um, CBPG housing, other special funds, pay for those programs, um, but tonight we're concentrating on the general fund. So this slide will show you general fund revenues. Um, we've got fourteen, fifteen actuals, uh, last year's budget of fifteen, sixteen as amended, and then the projected revenues from this year. So the bottom line is we're, we're looking good with a projected revenue increase of five hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, most of our revenues are taxes, the big ones are property tax, sales tax, and vehicle licensing fee. Um, those are all looking pretty good. We're a little perplexed by property taxes are down, um, but we're hoping recent sales will bring that back next year or maybe even the last half of this year. So, good news on revenues. Um, this pie chart just gives you an idea of, um, what those, uh, our makeup of the revenues by percentage and so as you see, um, those property taxes, sales taxes, license taxes, um, uh, make up, utility taxes make up a large proportion of our revenue, uh, which makes it difficult to increase revenues because most of those are capped by two eighteen. This is just a further breakdown of that last slide. We've taken the taxes portion and we've broken it down to show you sales tax, trans- uh, TOD tax, franchise tax, uh, utility tax, license permits, uh, business license tax. Uh, by that word.
Uh, I have a question. What would, what would miscellaneous be if my time will be there around twenty-five percent? I think it's a couple of percent.
Yeah, about.
What, what is, what is cozy to miscellaneous, if you're trying to figure out the result?
Those miscellaneous, uh, most of the time, for example, like a small, uh, tax refund from the IRS and like, um, miscellaneous from, uh, for example, sometimes you, uh, pay certain bills, you pay discount or credit and things like that, you go to the, uh, special, to the account.
Okay. Okay, and, um, although property taxes, um, one thing and we'll talk about later is, you know, development can definitely, um, increase taxes through development without both the people. Um, development of properties will increase property taxes, um, uh, bringing in stores that, um, retail sales will increase sales tax. Um, bringing in destinations to the city, like LA Fitness will bring people into the city who then will spend money in, in the city and increase sales tax. Um, and then also, um, our transporta- uh, our TOD specific, um, bringing density in the downtown will bring people here also, people spend their money, so. Um, this is just kinda showing the trends of those, um, major revenue sources. Again, we talked about last year, they're moving upwards, which is good. Um, the economy's still moving along, most economic, economic, economic experts are saying that, um, you know, we're still moving along good, there could be a recession in the future, but, um, as far as we know, it's, it's still, but all of those are trending upwards. Um, some of the other, um, fees shown here, this spike is a one-time, um, from, uh, waste management and sale of self-care leases, so that's a spike, but overall those fees in charge are increasing, which is oftentimes a sign of good development. Um, fines and penalties are decreasing a little bit due to some of the driver's license laws and the laws on, um, financing and utilities.
I'm trying to, do we, do we see any, um, property tax, I don't think it has any property tax, sorry. But will we see any property tax increase with the new homes? Will they be finished by then, the ones right here considered well by global?
Yes, we, we definitely will, um, and yeah, we're a little perplexed by this dip in the property taxes because, you know, typically home sales involved in car have been, um, at higher values and those typically lead to increased property taxes. So we're hoping this is just a, a pause and that, um, some of the new recordings that come in will increase that more and then obviously sales and new homes that are coming up are also up now. Um, as will properties that, um, get developed, uh, for example, the LA Fitness, or the Indigo Project, they're vacant now and so maybe the development will increase their property taxes.
So, this type of growth, I suppose, for this time, so.
I don't think HDEL is forecasting those correctly. Um, Rose and I sometimes get together on the larger projects and look at adding a little something in on those.
Okay. So, HDEL, they do?
They do on the property taxes and the sales taxes.
Okay.
And, let's see, so, just just giving you another breakdown of expenditures, uh, by department. Again, you've got the fourteen, fifteen column, previous year, the current year that we're in, the proposed budget, and then we're showing, um, any increases or decreases, um, in those departments. Some of the decre- decreases you see are because we have, um, leveraged special funds and to try to save the use of the general funds. Um, but as you know, um, in general budgets are going up as things possible and, um, as you know, the employee, um, MOUs, uh, will some increase costs. The, uh, non-departmental budget, uh, that you see in there is, um, basically the retiring health medical and then some of the other, um, dues that the city pays, the legal cities, uh, SCAG and the, um, bond. And again, that's just giving a breakdown, um, by department. Um, again, this is a little misleading because this is only general fund. Um, public works, um, uses a large amount of special funds, so even though they're shown very small here, they're probably assigned by department, community services, um, also leverage some of the special fund that we have. Um, and then, again, breaking down expenditures, um, capital, we're actually gonna be coming back to you, it's, it's nothing really shown here, um, but once this budget is set in stone, we'll be coming back with you with some of the capital projects, we approve the funding allocations for those, such as the landscaping intermediates, um, maybe other public works projects we have out there, possibly some street paving, uh, contractual services and maintenance and operations. You see a decrease and an increase, but really what happened is, is Rose is making the budget more accurate and there were some actual maintenance type of contracts that were shown under contractual services and we put them over into the public fund, so we straight. Uh, transfers out is shown on the next page, um, that's a small amount, uh, that we use to leverage to, um, run the summer lunch program and that's our managing amount and I think we get over two hundred thousand dollars to run that program, so that's our small portion to get that grant. Um, there's some funding that needs to go to make up departmental maintenance and then the, um, lease payment on the community center, uh, is another part of it. And again, just showing you, um, fund expenditures by, um, broken down in a pie chart and then as you see, personnel costs are one of our highest, um, costs and, uh, as I've told you before, we're pretty much a service industry and so that's, that's difficult with the service industry. Um, update on CalPERS, another reason that we were worried about, um, having a deficit this year is, um, costs continue to go up and as we know, CalPERS continues to go up. Um, we've also had, um, some increases in workers' comp and liability insurance, um, so we're very, that's another reason we could work really hard on this budget. Um, you'll see the current rate, um, and the current, um, CalPERS contribution. This is what the city's paying, uh, each year, um, when we pay someone paycheck, we are making this payment to CalPERS, so this money being paid now and upfront. Then it's showing you how that's projected to increase. Um, and again, these are just projections by CalPERS, depending on the market and how their investments do, um, these numbers could vary. So, whoops, um, so now to, uh, the good news. And really to give you a summary of, I've showed you our revenues, I've showed you our expenditures, I've talked about the deficit we were, um, uh, looking at having of possibly a deficit of one point four million dollars. And so again, I have to really thank Rose and her staff and all the directors. Um, we all came together, we came up with ideas, um, to save money, to, to slash a couple thousand dollars here and there to reduce this year's spending so that we can bring that deficit down from one point four million dollars to do this proposed deficit of only one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So again, thank you to Rose, her staff, all the directors, we've really been working hard on this and, and really tightening our belt and like I said, really looking at every one item and, um, reducing where we can to get by this year. Um, and then again, showing you, um, our general fund balance and what it's been doing in the history of the general fund balance. Um, with the proposed budget before you, um, the, the fund balance will take a small deal. Um, but we've shown here, um, originally what we started out at and, you know, we didn't wanna see the general fund go down in that direction that much. Um, because as I said, costs continually go up, we've got first costs going up, um, and we just need to make sure that we don't, uh, let that fund balance go in the wrong direction, so. Uh, due to the hard work of Rose and her staff and the directors, um, and their staff, we were able to keep that number up and, um, almost maintain the general fund balance for the rest of the year. Um, we've all.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, positions that are unfilled, the positions that dropped here, you, you put aside some, you say, you have to go up again. Do you account for some of those positions or?
We did, um.
Is that more hard to handle than?
Yeah, we did, there's been, um, you know, a few vacant positions that were part-time, um, and were not gonna be filled or removed by the budget. There's a few positions where, um, departments have agreed to freeze them and then, and also there's been, um, cases where we know, um, that, um, positions may not be filled within the next year. Community Development Director, um, is a good, uh, example right now that, in this budget is, could be frozen for you. So that would result in a saving, you've got staff that are doing that on an active basis and that's something that will.
Which one?
Community Development Director.
But then we got the contracts, right, so wouldn't that?
We have, um, we have, um, staff, public works director and, uh, public works director are acting in that position.
Yeah, what I mean by, exactly.
It's all being marked, uh, these, these severance.
Right.
But I think we're good on that, starting this next year.
You know what I was saying, those other contracts, we're just, we're paying them, they should be using that money and putting that in that particular position.
Um, right now, I don't know, um, you're talking about using consultants in place of city staff? Um, right now, we are using some consultants, but we've figured that into this year's budget. Um, we have, um, we've not filled the building official position, we're contracting that out and then some overflow work, uh, we do contact. Okay, so we've talked about revenue and we circulated this on a memo, so, but just to review, um, the types of things we're looking at. Um, whoops, we are, um, pretty much ninety percent complete with the fee study. We'll be bringing that back in the next month or two. Um, we showed you the public safety impact fee and, um, we approved the first reading and asked them to come back with the overall study so you can see how all those pieces fit together. Um, we're looking at developments that are coming up, um, and always trying to get new developments, um, in. These are, these are ones that are on the table possibly coming forward this next year. Um, we've talked about taxes, again, um, those can't be increased, um, without the vote of the people. The only tax, um, that can be increased, um, right now would be the, um, Business Improvement District because it was cut in half several years ago, perpetuating, allowed you to raise it up to the, um, place where it was before, so we can look at that when that comes around for renewal and, and consider that. Um, we're looking at other franchise fees, as you know, possibly billboard companies that might want to enter the city. Um, we're gonna go now into each department and, um, I'll go over quickly the administration and then we'll have each director come up and go over their department, the things that they're working on. And, um, the city clerk, um, is reviewing our records, request policies and procedures to make sure that, um, those are in line, we have a lot of, um, public records requests, so we can make sure we stay on top of those. Um, we have an old vault down in high-end that has a lot of records and, um, they're not organized. We are continually scanning, um, everything that we have and to make it electronic. Um, but the vault needs to be gone through, organized and then that information can be scanned. Um, and eventually, once everything gets scanned, it can be made available to the public on, on the website. It goes to records that, um, have been, uh, um. Also, um, you can update our retention schedule because there are certain, certain records where you do not have to keep, you know, to be disclosure. Uh, Information Services, um, as you probably know, um, Finance Department and, um, Public Works Planning Building are going to move, uh, the software. You'll see that coming up, I believe, the next week, or the, um, award contract for that new software. And so I will still be busy next year, be, I'm gonna get that online, replacing some of the workstations on the public city hall network, um, working on our backup facilities. Um, Human Resources, um, our MOUs, um, will begin, uh, July of two thousand eighteen, so it's gonna be sometime soon to, um, sorry, July of two thousand seventeen. So it's gonna be time to also start working on those very soon. Uh, there's policies and procedures to be updated, um, we need to update a salary schedule because of the new state law, um, minimum wages. Um, and then there was a CMU, um, agreement with the employee groups, uh, that we need to, um, do which converts their CalPERS, retired medical to the ten for minimum so that new employees, uh, that come into the city are eligible for, for that full benefit. They will work only one day and you can say, uh, within the long term, so the city is something. Okay, so now we're gonna go into, um, the departments and I'm gonna turn it over to Rose and have each department head will come up here and, um, talk about it.
Thank you again, uh, Arnold, Boomeia and the City Council allowing us to, uh, present the fiscal with sixteen, seventeen proposed budget to you. And as far with finance, we submitted the rocks, uh, to the Department of Finance. At this stage, we got approval from them that they allow us to repay the one point three million, uh, suraflo to the low mark income housing fund. And we also completed the process selecting the more efficient financial payroll and HR system or software. The software cost should be fully recovered after seven years through the current system's maintenance savings and saving the city forty thousand annually after the seventh year. Uh, the new system will transform complex city tasks and processes into a centralized workflow for efficiency, transparency and productivity and excellence without sacrificing data integrity. And it will eliminate data duplication and reduce human error with data sharing between departments. And data processing and report generation shall be a lot faster than the current system. The current system such, for example, like this budget, we have to manually entering in Excel and update so many pages, many. And this will save lots of time and faster and will be more accurate, efficient also. And, yes. Uh, we, we have a few com- about four companies and submit the RFP. We are going to, uh, present the recommendation to the City Council, uh, on June sixteen. And we were going to, um, propose to select Tyler based on the cost and everything, uh, they came out of.
And they actually met the needs of the Finance Department and Public Works in Delhi. So, um, oftentimes cities have software from two different companies and they know how to talk to each other, but in this case, they both felt that was the best software and they were able to use that to negotiate even a better price with the company, um, based on if we would have been able to using them for both of those software.
The, the annual cost is, uh, I have, uh, the company is, uh, very friendly. They willing to negotiate with me and for three and four, four times, we get the price down to a thirty-two thousand dollar per year for annual maintenance fee. The current company charges about sixty thousand dollars per year. And plus each year, they give the city five percent increase. That's why by year ten or seven, the annual cost will be seventy-six thousand dollars. And that's why in, in this slide, I mentioned that by year seven, the city will save forty thousand dollars each year. Also by this, by, uh, year seven, all those savings will pay the cost itself. Uh, the purchasing cost is two hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, original is about two hundred seventy thousand and during the negotiation, they are, they were willing to, uh, came down to twenty-five thousand dollars. And also the annual maintenance, originally, they were asking for about fifty thousand dollars. And so we negotiated down to thirty-one thousand dollars per year.
So the initial cost is a little bit high and then the intensity after a very time.
Right, yes. The highest company, it costs about four million dollars. And we keep negotiating Tyler and because, uh, we are getting the current software from them too and we said, because the city are going to purchase both software program from them and so we were able to negotiate a better price.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, you said that, that, that the cost will be recovered after seven years, but will they also do the updates in between the voting, down to, to some point? Or is it something that you know immediately?
That's, uh, that's another beautiful thing, uh, happened to go with Tyler and they promised us, uh, for a lifetime update, uh, and, uh, a limited user. Charge, they won't charge anything for a lifetime updating or modify the system or program. The current company, every single year, we have to pay them a couple hundred dollars here and there every time you need to update, uh, something or change something. For example, the, uh, new tax, uh, filing requirement, the ACA, and they charge you to update the system also. But this company, they would not charge anything that they are, uh, that they need to update system for tax changing, uh, CalPERS update.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Oh, will this software, are it decreasing the staff or is it the same?
Um, they won't require, uh, require to increasing a staff, but for the first year during the conversion, and we will be a little bit easier than normal.
Oh, so you can handle everything with the same staff?
Yes.
Or is it?
I think overall, Rose would probably make it a little more efficient because you develop system.
Yes, give you new reports easily, uh, without special program and that kind of. Uh, the main thing is going to benefit all other departments and provide a better transparency and also the City Council will be able to go into the system and check any special fund, how much we have spent there and from the one, from the same one screen, they have so many options there. From the demo we can see, it's going to be very convenient to, uh, everyone to get information about any project, any fund, how we have spent on them. Uh, okay, now then, okay, also we have, uh, completed, uh, financial audit and submit the audit, a single audit, timely and also to all the private agencies. Okay, so our, the finance goals, uh, for next fiscal year will be, uh, we are going to, uh, plan to consolidate and refinance all the successor agency outstanding loans. And currently, we have four outstanding loans with the successor agency and we plan to refinance that and also that will allow us to transfer the sales tax back from the Pan- uh, Panthema Se- uh, project area back to the general fund.
How much is going to, with the successor agency?
Uh, it has generally up between three hundred fifty thousand to four hundred thousand per fiscal year. So that will be, um, benefiting the city's general fund once we have, once we complete that process.
So those through the general fund?
It will become, yeah, it will go back to general fund because of the dissolution of the RDA. So it will allow us to consolidate all those loans and move the sales tax back to the city. Hmm, also, we, um, will try to get approval for repayment of the CP loans from the successor agency in, uh, two thousand seventeen and eighteen. Uh, currently, the successor agency owes the city's, uh, about twenty-one thousand million, but it won't happen in one year, it will take many years too. About twenty-two, uh, twenty-one million, but every year we add interest to it, so it's going to go. And however, this loan repayment will happen overnight, it will take many, many years.
So that money from the successor agency to the city general fund?
Yes, yes.
About how much you said? Twenty-two million?
About.
But how much does it mean?
Uh, we, it depends how much, uh, property tax we collected in the, uh, project areas. And after we pay all the outstanding loan, we cannot get the city loan repayment yet until we pay off all the outstanding loan for the successor agency.
How long?
No, it won't be twenty years.
You know with the dollars?
Could, could be, could be sooner.
Oh, really?
Really?
How soon? Listen, it, it depends, we cannot say at this moment.
You can work in three to five years, maybe.
So it's a surprise?
Maybe, maybe you're right, maybe in three or four years, we can start doing that, you see us.
You guys do, so. You guys do so, you have to advise and take whatever balance first report and see how much you got. You might cannot take it sort of that.
Do you want a projection?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, uh when we do the refinance successor agency debt, we will provide you the information at that point. Because this is not just based on the loan, it's also based on the projection of the property tax. And also, it's a very complex process. It also relate to all other surrounding agencies. We have to distribute all the past to uh first to them, then the residual value or money, then you can use it to pay the C P loan. Okay, so we will continue to provide a quarterly financial reports and revenue compared to expenditure and to the budget. And in the following month after each quarter ends to all the departments to keep them updated and see where they stands with comparing to the approved budget. And beginning fiscal two thousand seventeen eighteen, we will uh begin the process in March. And we go to complete them by the end of May two thousand seventeen. And we will continue to monitor and maintain a positive general fund balance. We are going to update the financial policies and ensure continuation of monitoring internal controls to safeguard city assets. We are going to implement system to take payments by credit card. And we are going to continue to provide excellent and timely internal and external customer service. That's that's for finance for now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, for all the hours you put.
Thank you, thank you for all the stuff.
Okay, any question, any questions on this one? You know what, I did have a question.
Oh, still have, you have a question?
Oh, you've finished?
Yes, I finished, yes.
You know what, I wanted to ask a question because the the pension obligation bond comes through at twenty eighteen, right?
Yes, July first, two thousand eighteen.
Well, how much are we pointing to, is that one point eight million or what is it, what is it?
You're hitting the right number.
Is it one point eight million?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay. Now, so that in itself, we should really seriously look at, look at aiming to pay the unfunded liability that will continue to grow.
Yes.
I mean, at least a portion of it or not, because that's that's gonna have to take the next about thirty, forty, fifty years, whatever the case is, for the retirement.
That's my plan in the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget. If you still uh allow me to serve the city, I will uh present the plan to the O K, trust fund, things like that.
I just personally think that that should just be too greatly aimed in that specific area.
Yes.
So we don't have to make the difference in certain especially that, but this would be common between time. But good job, by the way, both of you, not so personal.
Thank you. That's why I show you the uh update on help list.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross, thank you for your help.
Hey, 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 that's the chief back there. Thanks for the new ideas, by the way.
It's been a long time coming. Uh our budget presentation is pretty short, it's uh basically very simple. Our goal this year is to plan the fiscal year is to provide for seventy two square meters positions, which is the same as last year, we haven't increased it. And the reason we have is because we know we can do this for the city. Uh current sworn staffing levels at sixty six officers. Um even though we're going to shoot you for seventy two, we have no idea what you have there. With the retirements, everything, and also um past staff under agencies. There's seems to be a problem with power, we have to search, there's a lot of people that are police officers. And then some of the other players that are trying to manage insurance, but it's a sad thing to say. But we have a uh we have a plan that hopefully help a lot of everyone who's running. Uh we're going to increase our debt program to seven, which is just two from last year. The great thing about the cadence is the part-time employees are in Pittsburgh, college. Uh they work in some of the positions that we were going to use for the time staff. Uh for recruitment, we're looking at, as I said before, six police officers, they'll give us up to seventy two. Looking at a couple of dispatchers, four police cadets, four reserve officers, reserves. If you define them as separate uh regular full-time staff, they have the same police officer powers as a full-time police officer. So if that is, they will remain in the military powers and they're not entitled to benefits of the registered membership. Uh terms of recruitment, we're looking at hidden job fairs, community events. We're going to various police academies around us, looking for recruits that are there, they're having a competition with other agencies. This year, we're gonna try something a little new that other agencies have done, we seem to have a little bit success with it. It's hardline recruiting, it's basically advertising on one of the other agencies and it's a similar success for it. So a little bit of a shock. Uh our goals, this is uh probably um our only newer expenditure that we're gonna have this year. And I'll talk a little deeper, but basically, we're looking to, you see the two photographs up there? That's our current dispatch center. On the right, those are all the enhancements we have in our dispatch with our fat system, our computer in the dispatch. But in the back, the guts of it, which you see on the left there, that really is a picture of our current radio system. Um it's the uh pull it open, expose it, it hasn't been enhanced since eighteen eighty seven. Uh so um our current vendor who comes out here is using parts from other old radio systems to keep our system going. Uh we knew this was coming, uh it's eventually been here, we're hoping that it holds together at least for another year. Um the cost to enhance it, if we were just to do our radio system standing alone, would be in the neighborhood of about four hundred thousand dollars. Uh to overcome that, what we decided to do is we are going to look at going to a community system of radio system outside the valley. That is Comnet. And what that would do is basically we just have to put a limited amount of equipment into our system. The main system will be housed at another agency, and we're basically paying an annual fee, a small annual fee to put in the system itself. And that uh would enhance our communication capability in the sense that now we can have the same radio frequency with all the agencies in the same video valley with Comnet. And we also have the capability to, like, if we leave um our city, we go throughout our economy. That cell called Comnet has the ability to uh interact with other um other agencies outside their district. So it really enhances our overall capability. Now, for another Comnet, the cost for that would be about two hundred thousand instead of four hundred thousand. Uh I've been working with uh Dan Wall, who's um who's told me that there's a possibility, a very good possibility, that there may be some special funds that recover this cost, uh which would be a dump cost to the city obviously. If that happens, then basically our new budget will be made. So we're looking at that, uh looks, it seems, it seems fairly, fairly good. I'm really hoping that they can come up with the money, and if he does, they'll look at it and use it. Uh finally, our neighborhood safety services, as you know, um the code enforcement is now under the auspices of the police department, so we manage them, we also manage park enforcement. Uh we have three contracts, crossing guard is one, which went through city council with the uh with the minimum wage increase that run up, um I think they run up about twenty thousand dollars somewhere, but it wasn't that much. Uh animal control, we're looking at about two hundred forty seven thousand, however, uh you will see that there's an expected decrease in this. Uh it's based on the fact that they're they're actively doing licensing things in that area. And we won't get the results of that back for the next few weeks, so I won't make it for this. But uh we'll see significant increase now when it happens over here. Um oops, sorry, I need to cover this. Uh with that, that's uh basically all that we have for the police department.
Chief, back to this one, how much do you guys have in asset coverage?
Um combination state, federal, neighborhood dimension.
Yes, uh it's on the ready first, uh on the ten thou.
About three hundred thousand in federal, about a hundred and forty in state.
And we can't use that money for the radio system, I'll tell you that, because it's a known expense, and we be supplying to the public.
So the restrictions on that?
Yes, yes.
I thought I could, because I was just happy about it.
And we we thought about that too, so.
I know that wasn't. Any questions?
Uh, chief of board enforcement, uh how many staff members do you have, why did you say you recruit to? Uh we have sixty six currently, uh we have a retirement coming up next month. The board enforcement, there's sixty six. Oh, and code enforcement currently have three full-time positions. And your classes? Yes.
Who's your guy with the PD?
Uh Mark, I don't know about it, it's.
Wow, really, you've been here for quite some time, right?
Uh for uh, it's been a period of time. Uh we came over from this problem as a rather significant. Okay.
All right, real quick question, so the there's three hundred thousand from the bell and the one forty from the state for the asset coverage?
Yes.
All right, thank you, all right.
So uh in this past year, the uh public works department has been able to uh to help make the city look better in in general. So we've uh we've done a lot of paving projects, we've uh we've done some turf restoration, some landscaping projects on our parks, try to upgrade their appearance, and uh and um we've done festival wedding along the avenue. We secured funding for a C N G command section uh in Morton and Delaware. And so we've so we've done that kind of thing. Um the building department, which is which is uh under the temporal, we issued a hundred and sixty two permits, conducted six hundred and fifty one inspections, we have larger projects, uh such as the family project at the moon and the Eureka. A ninety thousand square foot industrial building on the Zeus Canyon has been upgraded and ready for a new tenant. And uh Williams Home Project, the whole department have set out there, which is also where we're going to be building an underground um of Edison Tel and sort of a building. In fact, that section has already been repolled by the community, there's a gap in the paving, and that's because we're waiting for the underground to happen. Uh for the planning department, uh the biggest accomplishment that we have is the downtown specific. And that's already uh generating some interest for economic development in downtown area since the involvement of the airport. So we've been turning to a couple of the city councils, other than the operating units, but we're driven by the downtown specific. So uh.
And if I could interrupt you, because you kind of like skipped over the city yard improvements. If you haven't been in by the city yard in the last year, I mean, it really looks great, and these guys have done a really excellent job, and the staff are really pretty supportive.
We're we're fortunate that the uh recognizing public works are very, very talented, and like, just just very, very talented, very talented. Have they, we have, we really, we really, we're always that we have. So uh goals coming up for our public works, uh we go into this in more detail at the capital treatment budget workshop that we're gonna hold at the council. But some of the goals that um we have planned are amenity, complete streets. We've gotten clearance from contractors to give us seed with this, we just have a couple more uh proofs to jump through for them. But this project will be advertised within this coming fiscal year. Um we plan on doing media and tour replacements, and uh as the council knows, we set through a bunch of workshops for those designs. Uh we've gotten eighty percent designs submitted to us, had to break it into four, four projects, um and depending on 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 money, if you have a good idea, whether you will. Well, our hope is to do all of the all of the meetings throughout the city. Um in case we don't have enough money, we'll split it up, we'll we'll do something for sure, for sure. Um to uh go to do the traffic signal, also interest in Hornborough, uh we have some goals for transit crews, uh modify subway driver line vehicles. We also have uh grant funding for two uh trawlers. These trawlers will go to Kaiser and the other employers in that part of town, uh to the metro line during rush hours. So they'll provide connection for commuters, and then during the plunge hour, actually from probably eleven to two, those trawlers will go from those leisure employment areas toward downtown to help support the downtown businesses. Um so we're also uh going to install some cross street airways, I know some of the members of the city council have requested those. And so we're gonna uh we're gonna budget, find budget to get those installed, so we'll be able to have community events and probably nonprofits. Um we are trying to develop those across some of the different streets. Um we're gonna do some bus stop improvements, and we'll have a study session with the council's board of directors. The council's input on what these bus stops will look like. And we're gonna continue with our safe routes schools improvements. And we've already done some improvements along Franger, along some of the high schools and middle school. And plan on doing a large Franger corridor, it's going to be um a little bit of a Franger corridor. That'll be coming up in this fiscal year. Um also, another traffic signal specific. Uh for planning and building safety, uh some of their, their biggest goal for this fiscal year is implementation of the permit software that we spoke to. Uh that will really help with efficiency in within those two um parts of the, that's in the city. Uh you have any questions?
They're going to add two additional trawlers, is that in addition to what we have now?
Yes, yes, these these trawlers will be in addition to what we have now. And these were actually, these were both ones that were intended to be there. But they are, they they could be, they could be, they they, yes, they could, but they're very easily looked at. So I will, I will join some other schools to the council for the council's blessing on that. And uh our our goal is to to make them store down enough for portable buses, so that people to and from the major controllers and necessary, that people can recognize it, gets their attention, and then realize that there's an invaluable service to improve that for them. And and also to take them to shopping and like, use those things.
Yeah, exactly, not only law, but even those inside the home, really, really. And I saw it going to separate.
More forms?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, let's have anyone answer any questions, right?
No, that's really good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Carrio, you should have brought those, you got the stuff we're giving at the farmers market.
Oh, boy.
I'd give you a hand, but.
How long is that?
I don't have those, I don't know. I forgot.
Is that where you work, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's not, all right.
Okay, Mayor, we'll go through this quickly.
This way, Mr. Mayor.
My question, new services, some of the expenditures, we have some of our youth programs, boxing, as well as swim team, after-school programs. We increase it from two to six for the latchkey sites, seven concerts, I believe we had five last year, we're up to six this year, uh fourth of July. And the now, as of right, as of this calendar year, it's being printed monthly. And I believe I dropped off the copy of the uh of the June edition, the edition, as well as the bottom of the page, there's a little barcode. So if you scan it, it takes you straight to the city's web website. So that's something that we do.
First time.
Yes. And uh the budget also reflects the increase in the minimum wage on January first seventeen, it will be going up to ten fifty. And some some elements not included in the budget, uh the Easter egg hunt, the homily impress, and saving city. Uh I will try to secure sponsorships uh for as many events as as possible, although as of right now, these events, these events are not included in the budget. We gotta make some tough decisions, so those I will read, yes. The grade is in, is in, yes. And some of the accomplishments, uh phase one is completed, we've secured the funds, and thanks to Dan's department, they administered the construction, so things are going well. And now we're at, we're going to be entering phase two. And just to refresh the council's memory, we have secured two grants, four hundred eighty thousand, and very late for six, as well as some additional funds in the city. And just to refresh the council's memory, we have secured two grants, four hundred and eighty thousand, and very little for six, as well as some additional funds in the C, C D P G. So phase two will start, uh, in the next few, three months, so that's something to be very proud of. And we are still looking for the funds for phase three. Um, it appears that we did, we did not get funded for, uh, the R M C's, uh, grant cycle this time around. But from what I hear, we may have a council member sitting on the board, uh, soon, so when the next cycle comes around, uh, ho- hopefully, we'll be able to make the adjustments that we were not successful. So we'll apply, and, uh, that project is moving at a, more speed, just a few years ago, it was looking pretty bad, and now it looks much better to me. And, uh, I, so- sometimes we take somebody's awards for granted, but Playful City, eight consecutive years, there are some cities out there that are just getting it the first time around. And C, C P R S, we picked up another war for the senior center, as well as we kicked off the certified farmer's market, something I've been chasing after for many years. As well as the Boys and Girls Agreement, uh, over a twelve-year, uh, uh, cycle, we have, will have generated, uh, over seven hundred thousand dollars with that agreement, seven thirty-nine, uh, three and four, as, as well as some savings on the janitorial agreement, and we just made the homeless count, as well as we're kicking off the sixty-eighth anniversary. Some, something else, uh, that I'd like to elaborate on, uh, we are rolling out a marketing campaign, uh, we are, we're calling it Let's Get Social, in Baldwin Park. And we are kicking off the Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and we're going to be kicking off some marketing videos. Uh, so that, we are looking forward to that, very impressed with the mayor's Facebook. Uh, Shannon passed around your, uh, your link for the drone on the, so very, very, very nice. So some other, some other goals that, that we have up there, uh, phase two for Walnut Creek, additional funds, uh, secure additional funds for phase three, and coordinate all aspects of the anniversary parade, we're, we are also working with Mr. Dimble for a time capsule, and a photo, and third center school auditorium, so a lot of, a lot of moving, moving parts. And we are, and we are up and out of interim right now, uh, for housing and community development, and just to recap, Section A, we have a four point five million dollar budget. We have about five hundred and fifty, uh, household under units, we have forty-five hundred tenants, and believe it or not, we have, uh, forty public tent, we have forty-five hundred tenant meetings, uh, and a thousand inspections, that we actually have staff physically go out and inspect the, the units, so Susie and her staff, I do need for H Shaw. And then the home program, one million dollar annual budget, uh, we have the rehab loan, grant home bar program, as well as subsidies for affordable housing. And C D P G, one point seven, and everyone's favorite, uh, it's the public services, where we disperse funds to the community. Uh, let's see here, uh, some more accomplishments for community development, uh, Susie's staff, uh, the highest involvement part history, we her, her and her staff actually, um, secured a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fraud, so that's a lot of money that we secured. Good job, Susie, and, uh, the housing staff was a guest speaker at, at HUD, which is actually Susie, so she is very well, well versed and well, well-known in the, in the field. And, um, so we are working with SCORE, which is a nonprofit agency for free business workshops, uh, we've had several at the arc, and they're relatively well-attended. Hopefully, we will get more businesses on board, I have to say, June ninth, we have a Halle Fitness groundbreaking ceremony on Thursday at eleven, at eleven o'clock. Uh, spoke to, uh, the developer today, and they are hoping, uh, they're not a hundred percent sure yet, to open up the four paths, um, on the same, same property they have with, uh, four, uh, other successful businesses, I would, I would, hopefully, they'll open up the same. And, uh, moving on to some goals for economic development, uh, hopefully, staff will attend the I C S C conference. I believe the one in, uh, Las Vegas was last week, but staff feels that the one in San Diego is a little more, better suited, uh, for the, the city. And we will collaborate with the Centennial Economic Development Partnership, and, uh, we will continue to work with the economic development strategy with AIM and Cosbot for a retail strategy. And we will continue to work on, on phase two for Rome, as well as the, uh, work with Waldorf, with our E, E, E D N A. Dan mentioned a little bit about his opinion, a matter, a manufacturing marketing, uh, that is a ninety-four thousand square foot warehouse, and it's from my, uh, it's my understanding that they have an inquiry from In-N-Out Burger to, to incorporate.
Okay, you're going to mail.
Yes. So, uh, did lots of good things happening in community development, and, uh, for the first time since two thousand and three, we will open up the Section A waiting list.
Oh, wow.
Yes, and it's, it's been a long, it's been a long It is going to be opened up, uh, Susie?
August, two thousand, uh, I, well, August, August sixth.
But there's, there's a waiting list now, right?
There's a waiting list now, we're kind of cleaning that one out, they are just about a three hundred forty, and we're releasing that, all of those are forty. And, um, we'll have to figure that out, we'll open up our waiting list.
Wow.
Yeah, we're, we're, only a week longer, it's going to be online, we're at the thousand.
Any questions?
Excellent, excellent, one thing, this is as well, you see, everyone, yeah. What was that?
Was it something sweet or like
Yeah, like salty, like salty. Oh, yeah, it was like salty.
Um, that's pretty much it, and we're going to open it up, if you have any, um, questions or questions, or any other direction. Um, our schedule for this, if necessary, we can have another study session, uh, June fifteenth. Um, we will also most likely publish and open the public hearing for the budget that same day, um, depending on the direction and the discussion. It could be approved that night, or it could be held over for other, um, discussion directions.
Yeah, I, I just like to say, I think, uh, you know, we're heading in the right direction, there's a lot of positive, uh, activity going on, with how, I think, uh, from, just standing here, four more gotten our emails, we have about five grand openings for business events, businesses, uh, really, coming to Baldwin Park, and what's opening up in this community. Uh, I think a lot of the economy's getting stronger, and especially, like, in a lot of the, of what we're seeing in, in city, uh, uh, funds that are coming through. I think each department has a lot of great accomplishments, from our police department, uh, a lot of the hard work that they do, and a lot of the, uh, uh, projects that they brought on board, and a lot of the equipment, uh, that we, that we've seen today. Public Works did a great job doing all their improvements, you can see out there, you can drive around, see how wonderful, like, streets are looking, and it's good to see all these projects that we're bringing for, uh, so, these department finance, they're working very hard, you can see that, and I'm glad to see all the, the ones that, uh, close our parts, they're doing a good job, so. Uh, just to conclude, it's all of them, I mean, I missed anybody, I think you are great. But I think I'd like to see though, because I, I think the budget was good, good, pretty thoroughly, and you seem to be able to get out a lot of the things, uh, with the budget, and find some costs in there. Because I just like to see, um, a schedule, like, where a lot of the work's going to get done, so I know, under the goals, possibly just put a, a timeline, of when you can expect to see those uh, items accomplished. But just to really know, I'd like to see the budget, the next budget, that you actually have, uh, goals tied, the limits going to get accomplished. And, uh, then we'll be on a mid-year, uh, uh, a mid-year budget next year, uh, six months from now, to see what we're doing, because I know a lot of these are projected, and eventually, then, the economy's doing good, we'll be able to make some, some, uh, corrections to the budget, uh, reduce the spot that was held, you know?
Very quick, thank you very much.
Can, can I be, like, discussed when we have our committee meeting, is it that we do, we do discuss it on
The, the mid-year?
Yeah.
We usually do bring back a report to the council, I think, helps the meeting, and, and, and if you have a short slideshow, just show you where we're at, maybe for the year, the adjustments that we need to make.
Obviously, we're, we're a surprise. Yes.
Okay, so at this point, I want to thank everyone that's, uh, who, who, uh, so, 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 so. All right, so this one
Thank you, if you want to take a short recess, and then we will have the
Bring them right next. The first, uh, already, if, if you may, it's very easy.
I think I went to a farmer market, it's more market than farmers.
That's the thing you see in last week, before there was more.
That was
It was not good.
But you, it's like, honestly, people really need to have us, money. Yeah, yeah, the audit committee, I'm not staying for that one, so.